Welcome to the fourth in a series of political candidate forums in advance of the November 5th general election. This forum is a cooperative production of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, the Tallahassee Democrat, and WFSU Public Media. Our candidates today are running for Leon County Commission District 4 seat. I'm Suzanne Smith from WFSU Public Media, and I'm joined by William Hatfield from the Tallahassee Democrat and Danielle Irwin from the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. We'll be questioning the candidates on various topics of interest to the voting public today.
The candidates for the Leon County Commission District 4 race, sitting left to right, are Isaac Montilla and incumbent Brian Welch. Reminder, for those watching us on social media, please hit the share button and help all your friends see today's discussion live. For those at home, here is how the forum will work. We will rotate which candidate gets to answer first. We have a lot of questions, so we're going to ask candidates to keep your answers to about 60 seconds, sometimes shorter, for follow-ups. We will keep time. We have a very sophisticated way of keeping time. You will hear this when your time is up. You don't have to come to a dead stop right then, but please finish your sentence and we will move on.
If you're watching live on Facebook and you have a question for the candidates, go ahead and type them in the comments, and we'll get to as many of them as we can. Time is very limited, so you can improve your chances of your question being asked if you keep it brief and polite. Make it applicable to both candidates. Any questions before we start?
No ma'am.
No ma'am.
Then let's jump in with the first question.
All right, our first question, and we will start on the left with Mr. Montilla. What's the biggest issue facing District 4 voters right now? You have 60 seconds.
I would say that, oh, first of all, let me say thank you for having me here. Definitely an honor to be here and addressing these questions that are concerning our constituents. I would say that the greatest opportunity is, as I'm knocking doors and talking to our community, they're finding more is that they want representation that's not aligned with the political, the political view. I think District 4, a lot of times, they're saying over and over that we're tired of politicians. And so I think the biggest thing, and the biggest opportunity, is presence in our community right now and making decisions that really helps our community to move forward. So our campaign is "We Not Me." So my leadership and my goal here is to lead in a way that really benefits the community first.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you, and first of all, thank you guys for having us. This is an extremely important venue, and I'm glad to be here. Thank you to WFSU, the Tallahassee Democrat, and the League of Women Voters. I think the biggest issue facing District 4, I think those issues are similar to the issues facing our county. We continue to see issues with crime. We continue to see issues with affordable housing. We continue to see issues with homelessness. These are challenges that are shared by all corners of the county. District 4, less so, but no less significant are those challenges. We want to make sure that we are contributing to solutions. I don't think we care about politics. It's really about making good choices, trying to be pragmatic with the way that we vote on issues, trying to be creative and innovative with how we solve those problems. We continue to see growth and development into the Northeast, which continues to be a challenge, making sure that our infrastructure keeps up with our growth and things like that.
Okay, this next question for Mr. Welch, followed by Mr. Matia. Generally, a county commissioner's job is considered a full-time position with a $90,000 a year salary. What is your current day job? And if elected, will you continue to work in that area?
Yes, thank you. I'm currently a high school teacher at Charles High School. I'm in my 18th year as a classroom teacher. As the incumbent, I have kept that job. I intend to keep that job. Really, being a county commissioner is an extension of that job. I work every day with constituents. They happen to be teenagers, but I work with their parents. I communicate with them. I'm fully entrenched in the community. I don't think you could be more present than serving as a classroom teacher at a comprehensive high school. And so I'll continue to do that. It's an extension of my service. I work 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The phone never stops ringing, and the problems never cease to need solving.
Okay, Dr. Matia, your turn.
Yeah, I think they got a raise. I'm not sure, but I think it's up to $99,000. But, you know, I'm a chiropractor. I'm also an entrepreneur in Tallahassee. Moved here 14 years ago and I've known a single person. So I think it's very important to understand, you know, as a business owner, you look at what's a return of investment. You know, one of the things that I'm running on is accessibility. You know, Commissioner Welch, he is a teacher. He's there full-time as a teacher. I think what I can bring to the table as the next commissioner, the next commissioner is accessibility, being able to be, again, Monday through Friday, and those are part of the plans that I have, which is canvassing our district, which is also part of biannual having town hall meetings to continue to be connected with our community.
Okay, let's move on to natural disasters. Dr. Montilla, we'll begin with you. We've had some really close calls with hurricanes lately, especially some in which only 10 miles spared Leon County from a direct hit. What kept you up at night when it looked like a direct hit was certain? And what does the county need to do ahead of next time when we may not be so lucky? One minute.
Well, I will tell you, it's interesting. I was being reached, reached out to by multiple people in the community because of the connections that we have from being in the community. And I would tell you, there's people that are in needs. I think one of the things that I saw in it, we were, my wife and I volunteered to fill up sandbags, is how do you also provide accessibility for people that can't make it to these sites, right? To be better protected from these storms. And that's actually what I took upon myself is this time around was fill my truck with sandbags and delivered them to those people that couldn't make it to these, to these areas. So again, I think we're doing some things good, and I think the ways to improve it is to implement, to have the whole community in mind for those that have accessibility, but those that don't have accessibility is a great opportunity as well.
Thank you. Brian Welch?
Dr. Brian Welch. Thank you, Danielle. I think that Leon County government has one of the best emergency management operations in the state of Florida. We've been tested time and time again. The county operates an EOC over there near Tom Brown Park. You know, we face a lot of challenges with storms here, particularly our coastal areas, transportation corridors, evacuation shelters. A lot of people come from McCulloch County and come up into Leon County seeking shelter when we have storms. I think obviously one of the biggest concerns that we have here are trees and the impact that trees have on our power grid. That's a very complicated issue. It's going to require a very creative solution, probably an expensive solution, as we talk about undergrounding our utility wires and so on and so forth. Excuse me. But I think overall, we have a top-rated emergency response program, and we'll continue to operate that. We'll continue to provide sandbagging operations and sheltering operations in partnership with Leon County Schools and the American Red Cross, and try to facilitate as much help as we can for folks in those times.
Thank you.
All right, let's talk about party politics a little bit. You both are running in District 4, Leon County's only majority Republican district. And while Commissioner Welch is a Democrat and Mr. Montilla is a Republican, Commissioner Welch, you were a Republican as recently as 2014, according to election files, and Mr. Montilla was a Democrat as recently as 2022. What role does partisan politics play in this race? And what does your political party history say about yourself? One minute.
Is that for me?
Yes, starting with you.
Thank you, William. I think it plays no role in this position. I tell people all the time, I don't care about party ideology. I'm not somebody that goes to party functions. I could care less. This is a nonpartisan job. The sidewalks in the parks don't care what your political ideology is when you're trying to build them or repair them or fix them. This is a job about service. It's a lot like being a school teacher. Like I said earlier, it's an extension of helping people, and that's all I care about. I wake up every morning with a simple question, how can I help people today? How can I use the privilege that I have in this position to move the needle for people, improve their lives, make them safer, make their property values higher, make our community and our quality of life better? And so I would tell you that the district is not a partisan district. It has a very small Republican registered voter advantage, but it has 10,000 NPA voters. So just like the rest of the county, it's a moderate district.
Thank you, Mr. Montilla. Dr. Montilla, same question.
It's all right. Yeah, so I was raised in a Democratic home. I was raised a Democrat, and then as soon as I filed, whenever I filed a registered vote, that's when I switched over parties. So for me, yes, it does play a role in the way you view things. But I think what I realized in running as a Republican is that it's not, for me, and "We Not Me" is not about partisan, what you registered as. What it means about what you, what's your goal and what's your focus? And sure, Commissioner Welch just mentioned in terms of the things that you have to decide, but there's also bigger, bigger problems how you address. How do you look at people? How are you, what do you care about? How are you going to make that decision? So driven by people, Northeast, yes, it is, I think it's slight advantage by 6% Republican, and there's nonpartisan as well involved in there. Partisanship, sure, you register some way, but it's not the final, if you're driven by people and you're driven by the right, in the right direction.
Thank you. A couple of questions for each of you individual, well, one question for each of you individually. Mr. Welch, you were originally elected by some of the same progressive forces that helped elect Jeremy Matlow and Jack Porter. What's your affiliation with the progressive wing now? And has your political path changed? 30 seconds.
I have no affiliation with the progressive, and I do not accept that logic that I was elected by a progressive movement. I was elected by 22,000 voters in District 4, a bipartisan movement. It's really not about politics, and I don't think anybody cares about politics, frankly. Again, it is a nonpartisan race. We are not running as Republicans or Democrats in this race. I would tell you that my votes will reflect kind of where I'm at philosophically in the community, and so I think those run counter, unfortunately, in some cases, to the progressive dynamic.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Montilla, you spoke at the beginning about, you know, a path beyond party. The Republican Party is vocally backing you. What should voters take from that full-throated endorsement? 30 seconds.
I mean, there's nothing else to take other than the fact that they're backing me. I'm the only conservative running in this election and just having a voice for the party and be able to bridge the gap within our communities and working together to see us move forward in a positive way. So that's, that's what I'm excited about.
Okay, thank you.
According to its strategic plan, one of Leon County government's core practices is exercising responsible stewardship of the community's resources. In your opinion, is Leon County government a responsible steward of our community's resources? Why or why not? There's one minute for this. We'll start with Dr. Montilla.
I think that there's opportunity to budget correctly. There's opportunity to make better decisions to help also in the time of need. So we look at, you know, when I make that statement, it's like, what do we look at now? We look at, we're in a financial downturn, and it's easy to always to increase taxes as a way to gain back gains for the following year in terms of budgeting. But how are, why are we taking those steps when we're hurting as a community? Why not pay attention to the immediate need as well, sure, as you project for the near future? So I think that there is opportunity to budget better, to spend taxpayer dollars better, and to get, like I said earlier, an ROI, return of investment. What are we getting in return that's going to help us not only now, but in the near future as well? Infrastructure continues to be a big problem, right? Traffic continues to be a big problem. These are issues, and it goes tight to the first question you asked me, is these are issues that are continuing to be a problem, known years ago running this in the last election.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you. I think Leon County does a fantastic job of stewarding our resources. I think it's important for folks to understand, Leon County has a budget of $377 million. Over half of that budget goes to the sheriff's office, as well as to our other constitutional offices. We run one of the leanest budgets of any like-sized county in the state of Florida. We have one of the lowest employee-to-citizen ratios of any like-sized county in the state of Florida. So I think we do an outstanding job at Leon County with how we steward our resources. It's a very important issue. We take it very seriously, and, you know, we don't build traffic infrastructure with Leon County budget. That's a blueprint sales tax budget issue, and that's why that sales tax exists. And so I think we do that really well as well.
Okay, William's going to take this next question.
What do you make of the dysfunction across the street at City Hall with the very split commission? And how does that impact county government or blueprint functions? Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, William. I don't think it impacts county government at all. They're two separate governments. I think that if you look at Leon County government, we have a very collegial and respectful body. I know I personally try very hard to maintain that, and I think you see that. So it's a stark, it stands in stark contrast to what we see across the way at City Hall. Now, the city is a much larger government, billion-dollar budget, only has five elected officials. You know, we are one of the unique counties in Florida where we have one city government. So it's, those challenges are completely unique to them and really don't affect Leon County.
Dr. Montilla, same question.
I think it bleeds over. You know, I think that you see the way leadership is, you got to work together some way, shape, or form. I think that, you know, there's, there's votings that were done that were influenced by, you know, outsiders. So, you know, as I, you know, one of the things that I'm running on is you gather, study, and implement. I gather that there's decision-making that is influenced by the city as well. So again, why my focus is to run on "We Not Me" is to figure out a way, how do we agree to be able to move forward for the greater, for the community?
Thank you.
Staying with you, Isaac Montilla. After a pretty contentious blueprint fight, we have a groundbreaking coming, in fact, later this week, for a scaled-down Northeast Park. The park was a key issue in the race in which Commissioner Welch emerged victorious over Brian Deloche. What happened to the original version, excuse me, vision of this? And is it a victory for District 4 residents? One minute.
It is a victory that we do have a park. However, you got to look at how it was done, and I think that for the average District 4 constituent that works and is always busy is not paying attention to what happens behind closed doors. The way that it was done was not done cordially, and it goes back to my statement I did before. What happens in the city and how politicians have often times try to hold a grudge, it affects us. So we lost money in it. So overall, I think, yes, I live down the street from it. I'm excited that we're going to have a park. I also think that we should name it Brian Deloche Community Park.
Thank you. Brian Welch?
Thank you, Danielle. I'm obviously very proud of the Northeast Park. We'll be having a groundbreaking tomorrow. The Northeast Park wasn't scheduled to be built until 2035, and through, you know, some pretty deft maneuvering on my part and with my county commission colleagues, we were able to get a substantial amendment through Blueprint, which required unanimous approval from our colleagues at the city. So obviously, they were on board with our park. There was some disagreement about the budget of the park. We were able to land the plane. We're going to get a beautiful, wonderful park. It'll break ground tomorrow, 10 years ahead of schedule, which I really can't understate the significance of what a big accomplishment that is. So I'm super proud of it. It sort of represents investment in infrastructure in Northeast Tallahassee, and we're going to see a whole bunch of that in the next four years.
What do you think happened to the larger, original vision that caused it to be scaled down?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to say. Obviously, politics is politics, and, you know, City Hall is, as you mentioned, a dysfunctional organization, and, and when we started going through those blueprint projects, and it kind of became a feeding frenzy, and I've been very much against that. I've tried to maintain the integrity of all the blueprint projects, and unfortunately, the Northeast Park just happened to be at the wrong place at the wrong time. It really has nothing to do with, with anything other than that.
Thank you. All right, now I've got the next question. Commissioner Welch, how would you characterize your opponent's campaign finances? And what does it say about his campaign? 45 seconds.
I have nothing negative to say about my opponent's campaign finances. He has done a great job raising money from a coalition of friends and supporters, just like all of us. You know, it's unfortunate that it's going to take $350,000 or $370,000 to win a districted seat in Northeast Leon County, but that's the nature of politics. And so I have no criticisms of his, of his donors.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Montilla, same question.
Well, it's interesting that when Brian, when Commissioner Welch ran last time, he accused the previous commissioner of certain donors, and it's the same donors contributing to his campaign. And so for me, yes, I see that there is, there's some difference there in terms of community contribution, but I also believe that there's special interest in there.
All right, thank you.
Our next question is on the topic of public safety. In your opinion, what are the main causes of gun violence in Tallahassee, Leon County, and what does the county need to be doing about that? Dr. Matia, we'll start with you.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
And you'll have one minute.
Yes. I think the, one of the opportunities for us here is to be able to tap into the resources to pour into these younger generation. When we see a lot of gun violence, we see that there's lack of identity. It's something that we've been working on even as a community leader. How do you create better, stronger relationships and value? How do you set programs in place? And I know there's some that are stepping in, such as the sheriff as well, is tapping into that and helping bridge the gap because it continues to be a problem, but I really associate it back to household and value. How do we pour into the younger generation to create that value and just give them hope? So that's, that's the direction that I, I like to go towards.
Commissioner Welch?
Thank you. I would first like to say, you know, I'm proudly endorsed by the Police Benevolent Association locally and our sheriff, Walt McNeil, who I think is doing a fantastic job. I think that partnering with the sheriff, with TPD, and with the city of Tallahassee, we've seen a reduction in gun crime in Leon County. We created and funded a real-time crime center. We have done all kinds of things to improve the salaries of our police officers. Our deputies in Leon County now make $60,000 a year starting salary. Obviously, this is a community-wide issue, and we all have a responsibility. Unfortunately, a lot of the guns that are used in our crime are stolen out of vehicles, and a lot of those vehicles are unlocked. A lot of those vehicles are located in Northeast Tallahassee, unfortunately. So it takes a community-wide effort, all of us acknowledging that we have a responsibility to try and improve this issue because it has a ripple effect across our community, our economic development, our growth, our education system. And so we definitely have to be all in, as the sheriff says.
Moving on to the topic of affordable housing, Brian Welch will begin with you. During a February 2022 workshop on affordable housing jointly conducted by our county and city commissions, it was estimated 11,500 new affordable housing units would be needed in Leon County by the year 2045. What actions must be taken to address this need? You have one minute.
Thank you, Danielle. We've done a great job at, you know, leveraging federal dollars. Columbia Gardens at South City has been redeveloped for the first time in 50 years. We have a significant responsibility to try and do everything we can to provide more affordable housing. Obviously, it's a complicated issue, like homelessness and crime, it's going to take a complicated solution. I think one of the things that we can do is lessen the cost of regulation on our builders. Every dollar they spend on permitting or building a retention pond gets passed on to renters. I had a conversation yesterday with a gentleman who's trying to build an affordable unit on the south side of town, and he mentioned that his lot price has now gone up by $2,000 to $3,000 a lot, simply because of the requirements that we're putting on them from a regulatory standpoint. So I think there are multifaceted things we can do to try and solve that problem. I think the first step is recognizing that we have that problem, and we had that brought to us last year by some faith-based organizations. And so it's right at the front of our focus right now, and we're committed to try and solve that problem.
Thank you. Isaac Montilla, same question.
Yeah, which I appreciate you bringing that, because that was my answer on one of the forums that we've done, is, I think the process needs to be revisited. I think that, you know, you're, we're coming up for reelections for some of the current local... local elected officials, and it's, the question is, why have we waited this long to do something about it? So for me, it's groundwork. It's how is the process being handled, and how can we improve it to ensure we can pass those savings on?
Thank you.
All right, we're going to change the tempo a little bit and go into our lightning round. That means one-sentence answers. You, of course, can explain your answer with an "and" or a "because," but not too much run-on sentences, especially, you know, we've got teachers here. So we will start with you, Dr. Montea. You will be sharing the ballot with what some consider to be the most important election in history. Who will you be voting for at the top of the ballot? Dr. Montea.
The person who's going to lead us in a positive way forward, help us financially, help us come together, and look out for our country as a whole.
And who is that?
Oh, I'm voting for Trump.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, William. I will not be voting for Donald Trump. I am very likely to vote for Vice President Harris, but I am, like a lot of people, not decided on that yet. You know, I think it's very concerning, you know, overall, the level of vitriol that we see at the national level, and I hate that it bleeds into local politics.
Single most prized endorsement and why? Commissioner Welch.
Oh, gosh. Sheriff McNeil, obviously, you know, very respected gentleman, somebody who's been a great partner to Leon County and our government.
All right, thank you. Dr. Montea, same question. Single most prized endorsement and why?
My family.
Okay. Dr. Montea, what is one pledge you would make to voters right?
You said why.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. You're right.
It's all right. I don't have to answer, but I'm sure everybody knows why.
Yes, yes, why.
It's all right. It's all right. We're good. We can move on to the next one.
That's lightning.
It is. You're right. You're right. We're on the next one. It's all right.
So, okay. What is one pledge you would make to voters right now that you will accomplish if elected, and how will you achieve it?
I would, I would listen, not just speak to them, but speak with them and come alongside and make the best decision for our community.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Welch, same question.
We're going to get all four northeast Leon County blueprint projects built in the next four years.
All right. Commissioner Welch, as a county commissioner, you'll be working closely with your counterparts in the city commission. Toward that end, who would you endorse in the pivotal city commission race with City Hall control at stake?
I would not make an endorsement in that race because I think that's bad form. I have to work with whoever wins that race, or one of us has to work with whoever wins that race.
Dr. Montea?
Actually, I agree with them. It's about working together.
Dr. Montea, happy bicentennial. Tell us one person in Leon County history you admire and why.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. Someone present, or does it matter? Oh, somebody in Tallahassee, sorry, in terms of bicentennial. Talethia. She's a huge advocate for her community, and I respect her hard work, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Welch.
In all fairness, that's a tough question. I'm glad I got that second. As I sat and thought about it, which I had the benefit of, so thank you, Dr. Montea. I would say Bill Motford, Senator Motford, who was a former schoolteacher, superintendent of schools, county commissioner, state senator, and all-around super-respected statesman.
All right. What's one change we need to make to the development code and/or permitting process? Commissioner Welch.
Currently, our permitting timeline is a 29-day, 30-day turnaround on a permit. I think that needs to be shortened. Oftentimes, that permitting cycle gets, gets, gets kind of pushed down the road too much.
Thank you. Dr. Montea, same question.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question again?
What's one change we need to make to the development code and/or permitting process?
I would, just the structure of it. Someone who's, who's actually built in Tallahassee, who's, who's renovated and gone through the whole permitting, I would tell you, just revisit the process.
Okay. True or false, preserving our trees is as equally important as economic development? Dr. Montea.
Oh, me. I would say that it's for sure important.
True or false?
Oh, I'm sorry. True, false. Is it, is it?
Preserving our trees is as equally important as economic development.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Welch.
True.
Okay. Lastly, Commissioner Welch, what is the single biggest thing you have done to make the Leon, to make Leon County a better place to live?
Well, I feel like I have advocated very strongly for a Northeast Park, which certainly is going to help the residents of Northeast Tallahassee get on an equal playing field, no pun intended, with the rest of the community, but also advocating hard for Northeast Tallahassee to see infrastructure investments such as Madison Road widening, Wiloni Boulevard, and the Market District Park.
Thank you. Single biggest thing you've done to make Leon County a better place to live? Dr. Montea.
I would say one of the projects that we've done is tap into our tab. We actually led the initiative of opening tabs in the most, one of the most hardest times, crucial times in, in our city, which is going to small business, investing a certain dollar amount, inviting the community to pump into it. I think it generated over $15,000, $20,000 into the economy.
All right, thank you. You've made it through the lightning round, and I'm tired. We've been asking all the questions. So it's your turn. What's a question you'd like to ask your opponent? And your opponent will have one minute to answer. We will start with you, Dr. Montea.
The question I would want to find out is, we talked about financial contributions. You know, your vote to increase taxes, you vote on Waste Pro to do our garbage services, and then turn around and, and take maximum contribution from Waste Pro. I would want to know, is that not conflict of interest?
No, that is not a conflict of interest. Waste Pro is a voluntary service that we provide in the county, and they were the lowest bidder, Dr. Montea. So had we not chosen Waste Pro, we would have a more expensive trash service, and I think it's very unfair to suggest that we've raised taxes in Leon County. The fact of the matter is, we haven't raised the millage rate in Leon County in 13 years. Let me repeat that. We have not raised the millage rate in Leon County in 13 years. That is unprecedented in the state of Florida. We have been able to balance our budget, which pays our deputies, which provides us with emergency responders and ambulances, and gives us the ability to help people during storms, the ability to provide parks and recreational services. And so I'm proud of the fact that our budgets are balanced without raising millage rates.
All right, your turn, Commissioner Welch. What's a question you would like to ask, Dr. Montea?
I am still curious as to what exactly Dr. Montea disagrees with me on in any specific vote or statement that I've made.
That's, I think that's.
Dr. Montea, one minute.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a big question there. It's how everything has been done since he's been in office in terms of the big votes. I said it earlier, outside influence on his decision-making on Doak Campbell Stadium. It's how he dealt with the park, how he lost money in the park. It's pro, lack of proactivity in creating public safety, weighted to accidents happen. I witnessed one of them on, on the way to Charles High School. So as a review halfway through your term, I sat there and looked at all this, what's going on. I said, we have to do better. And so that's the reason why I put my name in the hat.
Okay. And we're going to talk about so many of these issues more. Right now, we're going to talk about the budget. Over to you.
All right, the budget. I am.
Or wait, are we, we're bouncing backwards.
We're bouncing backwards, I believe.
I screwed us all up. Never mind.
All right. The question is on homelessness. If elected, what would you do to address homelessness? One minute, we're going to start with Commissioner Welch.
Thank you. We have done a great deal to try and stem the tide of homelessness. I think you have two kind of issues there. You have folks who are in need of rapid rehousing, you know, you lose a job or something happens. And then you have a chronic homeless population of people who really want to live outside. We have done a great job of committing resources to providing more beds for rapid rehousing. And, and obviously, now we're going to have a significant investment and really unfunded mandate by the state of Florida on all local governments to keep people from camping on sidewalks. So I tried to get an ordinance through the Leon County Commission in my first year that would have mirrored essentially what the state's legislation has now mandated on us, which is, I feel like we need to create a standard of living that is acceptable. We need to sort of put a line in the sand and say, we're not going to let you sleep on the sidewalk because we love you more than that. And until we have the willingness to do that, we're going to continue to see those problems. We have funded $500,000 for host deputies, dedicated deputies that reach out to our homeless population to try and, try and persuade them to receive the services that we want to provide them.
Dr. Montea.
Yeah, so thank you for the question. Actually, being on the phone, dissecting different ways to be able to address this. No one's going to solve the problem, but how can we make a better progress forward? And there are cities right now that are doing, they're taking excellent steps in, in, in helping these, in helping homeless individuals move forward, you know, and also tap into the resources. So for me, is how do we tap into other areas, learn what's working that can help us be, move forward quicker in the most responsible, effective, and, and cost-effective way? The easy thing, sure, is to continue to put money in it, but we've got to see results from it. And, and that's, that's my goal, is getting office and working with others to make sure that we can move forward in the right way.
This next question is on the same topic. It'll be 30 seconds. As of October 1st, a new law bars counties and cities from allowing a person to regularly camp or sleep on public property. Also, local governments are authorized to designate a public space for camping and sleeping with approval from the state. How is the county enforcing this new state law? Does a public space need to be designated by the county for camping and sleeping, and if so, where? Again, this is 30 seconds. We're going to start with Dr. Montea.
That's a great question. I'm not in seat, so I don't know all the details of it. I'm sure there is property. That's one of the organizations that I've been in, in communication with in Houston that did, they designated a location for homeless, but, but it's a, it's a great place, and there's certain restrictions that they have to abide by to allow them, right, to be able to be part of that. But I also want to address that, address, working with homeless, there's multiple facets. There's the mental component to it, there's a circumstance, there's multiple levels of why these individuals are out there. And so finding out the reason why, how can we come alongside them and create this, I think allocating an area and also working and giving them opportunity, I think, is a great, one, one of many ways that we can help them.
Commissioner Welch.
Yeah, as I mentioned before, I mean, this is going to be a significant financial burden on local governments throughout the state. You're talking about folks who are suffering from significant mental illness, in many cases, substance abuse issues. I'm talking about the chronically homeless population. They don't want to be housed. And so at what point can you compel them legally to receive services, to get a roof over their head? I, I think unfortunately, there's going to be an unintended consequence of that law from the state, which is going to have criminal impacts put on homeless populations. And right now, that's, pressure's going to be applied to our jail, which already houses about a 63% population of mentally, mentally ill folks.
These next questions are focused on Blueprint. Brian Welch will begin with you. Local voters approved Blueprint in 1989. It's funded through a 1% sales tax. The Blueprint Board, made up of city and county commissioners, has two functions: support infrastructure and economic development; make the elevator pitch to voters that our money is being spent wisely or not. One minute.
I would say the first thing I would do is get off the elevator and go to Cascades Park. I would go out and see the work that's being done in front of the airport. I think it's unquestionable that Blueprint has been a success. As we mentioned earlier, local governments don't have the money for capital outlay anymore to provide infrastructure. So local option sales taxes have become the mechanism by which we build roads and bridges and parks and quality-of-life improvements to, to lessen our time in traffic and give us a lifestyle that improves our quality of life. So Blueprint has been an unquestionable success. Now, the economic development component of the current Blueprint plan, which is the 2016, or 2020 to 2040 Plan, provides a great tool. We've been able to leverage that tool to bring Amazon here, to get Danfoss to expand. It's a really great tool, but unfortunately, as you can see, as we discussed earlier, it becomes a bit of a feeding frenzy, and everybody kind of wants their little piece of the pie. And when you start giving money to stadium upgrades and things like that, it creates more problems. So I think all in all, the Blueprint project, Blueprint tax has been a tremendous success and will continue to be.
Thank you. Isaac Montea, your elevator pitch.
Yeah, look, I'm not, I'm not in the seat. I'm not a politician. I don't have to use all these big words. I'm just going to keep it really simple. You know, pertaining to District 4, if anybody lives and resides in District 4, I think you can tell if it's really, it's helping us in our community. And so I would say that it's not, it's not being effective in our side of town, and that's what we're running for, running to represent District 4. And we've got a lot of problems in District 4. So how do we work together to help us move forward? And that's what my focus is on.
All right. This next section is going to be 30-second thoughts on some particular Blueprint projects. The question is, was it worth it? Football stadiums and sports fields. Isaac Montea.
Was it worth it? So there's two sides of me right now, right, that wrestled through that situation. I'm a booster, I'm a fan, but I'm also a business owner. So for me, as it's been voted for, I think there's worth in the small business. So when I, what I thought about was, there's 15,000 fans that are no longer being in stands, right? So how can we work with Florida State to be able to generate those small businesses and, and create something around the stadium that's going to help? And I think also, we also got to remember that it wasn't only Florida State that got an opportunity. We also know that FAMU also got an opportunity.
So in terms of just the yes or no, was it worth it?
Was it worth it?
Yeah.
Oh, it was a yes or no.
Yeah.
Was it worth it? Which side do you want me to answer, from my business side or my personal side?
So is it two different sides?
Well, there is, because my business side says, hey, business-wise, it was, it was a business decision. From my personal side, no, I didn't like it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Brian Welch.
Thank you. Just, you know, I voted against the allocation for FSU's stadium funding. I would have voted against FAMU's for the same reason. Do I think it was worth, did I think those investments are worthwhile? Absolutely, they're worthwhile. It just becomes a question of, should that investment be borne by taxpayers? I offered a $10 million compromise to FSU that was turned down in the meeting, and I offered a $15 million compromise to FSU that was turned down. So unfortunately, in any case like that, I try to find the common ground. I do my due diligence. I went out and looked at the stadiums. They are an unquestionable economic driver in our community and very important to us. But it just becomes a question of, you have limited funds, are you going to tap those funds to support those singular issues?
Well, staying with you, Brian Welch, what about the $2.56 million in incentives for Amazon? Was it worth it? 30 seconds.
There is no question that the $2.56 million in incentives for Amazon were worthwhile. I'm proud that that's in my district. We've already seen a $3 million return. So we've already made back the money that we gave Amazon in one year. That's a $200 million capital investment that created 2,000 jobs. And so one of my criticisms of Doak Campbell Stadium's allocation was that you could have done about 15 Amazons for that allocation. And so there's opportunity cost in everything, but $2.5 million for a $300 million total economic impact, absolutely worth it.
Thank you. Isaac Montea.[1609.76]
Yeah, so was it worth it? It's a simple yes for me. Um, but speaking in those two projects and those two votes, on the business side of the Doak Campbell Stadium is, projection-wise and what the income that it generates for our income, yes, it was the right decision to vote for, right? Because sometimes we not, we don't see it now, but what's to come in the future? Absolutely. So working with the program closely, I can tell you that yes, long-term, it's, it's, it's a great decision to help our economy. Amazon, great decision to help us now in our economy.
Isaac Montilla, same question. Was it worth it this time?
Yes.
The 1.8 million and the specially-created recoverable grant for the Somo Walls Distillery Project. 30 seconds.
Was it worth it? I see there, I, right now, I see the benefits of it. Like, I actually took my, my daughter, my daughter, I took my wife on a date there, and I can tell you, I am experiencing the benefits from yes. It is worth it from that decision that they made.
Brian Welch?
Um, yeah, another item that I voted against, just because on principle, I don't feel like the government should be picking winners and losers in the private sector. I'm sure Dr. Montilla would've liked to have got 1.8 million dollars for his practice expansion as well. I think the jury's still out on whether it was a good investment or not. I offered a compromise on that one too, for about a million dollars that was rejected by the board. Um, obviously, we wanna see redevelopment on our south side. Uh, what they've done there is, is beautiful. They've done a great job. Hopefully, that creates a ripple effect all the way through to our Blueprint project at the fairgrounds. Um, but ultimately, I don't think that government should be picking winners and losers in the private sector.
Okay, Brian Welch, final one on this topic. Was it worth it, the rising costs of the 134 million dollar airport gateway? 30 seconds.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I've been a staunch supporter of the airport gateway, as well as all the Blueprint projects, frankly, who have seen their costs go up, but only because, you know, the cost to build things has gone up dramatically. Uh, everything is revenue-neutral. Our budgets are balanced at Blueprint. One project is not taking from the other. The airport gateway is a project of great foresight, with, foresight, with tremendous economic development potential in the future by leveraging this very location here in Innovation Park and our National High Magnetic Field Laboratory. Uh, it's just gonna be an absolute game-changer.
Rounding us off, Isaac Montilla?
Yes, I think it was worth it. Somebody who loves to travel and someone who oftentimes as well thinks, "Why can't Tallahassee be like this?" Or can't have these amenities? I think, yeah, I think it was.
Thank you.
The next question is on the issue of development. The public is concerned that developers often clear-cut land and destroy natural features with little regard to its impacts on wildlife, the environment, surrounding neighborhood, and traffic. If elected, what, if any, actions will you take to address such concerns and mitigate such impacts? We're gonna start with Dr. Montilla.
Um-
You have 45 seconds for this.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, repeat the question.
Sorry.
Sorry, it's all right.
And it'll be 45 seconds.
Yes.
The public is concerned that developers often clear-cut land and destroy natural features with little regard to its impacts on wildlife, the environment, surrounding neighborhoods, and traffic. If elected, what, if any, actions will you take to address such concerns and mitigate such impacts? 45 seconds.
Oh yeah, I, it's important not to, it's not, it's important to make sure that you're not just, developers just taking over and just clear-cutting, right? So I think there's great opportunity, as I've talked and, I've spoken to some HOAs, is having that in mind. How do we work together? You know, the goal is not to work for developers, the goal is to work with developers, to work with HOAs, to work with our communities, to put all this into context, and to put in the forefront of importance that it's not just going and clearing and then, and then dealing with the side effects later, it's how do we prepare for that in a responsible manner? So I'm, I'm all for responsible growth, which includes everybody involved.
Commissioner Welch?
Thank you. I, I think that's a, uh, you know, it's one of those things, there's a disconnect in the community. If you talk to folks, uh, they think that, that government lets developers do whatever they want, but if you talk to developers, they tell you this is the hardest place in America to get a permit to build anything. Uh, I, I think there has to be a balance. Um, obviously, developers are operating under a very strict environmental permitting program, uh, in Leon County that's one of the strictest. Um, oftentimes, when you see a clear-cutting operation, that's gonna be permitted by a state silviculture permit. Uh, so nobody's breaking the rules. I think it takes, uh, coordination, it takes a, a very engaged, uh, elected official, working with neighborhoods, working with impacted parties, working with stakeholders, to try and find a balance. And I have done that in multiple occasions, I could give you examples of, in which we have had positive outcomes. But obviously, we want our development to look like Tallahassee, and so when you cut it down and make it look like Mars, that creates a problem.
All right, we're getting to the home stretch, so let's talk about the budget. Uh, this year, county commissioners opted to keep their, uh, property tax rate the same, but because of rising property values, the county reaped an additional $19 million in revenue, which is considered a tax increase under Florida law. Should the county do more to tighten its belt and offer taxpayers relief? Commissioner Welch, get us started here. One minute.
Thank you. As I mentioned before, Leon County has not raised its millage rate in 13 years. Yes, we had a $19 million revenue increase this year. $3 million of that was from Amazon alone. Another $3 million of that came from new construction. We are growing an economy. Every time we build a new house, that adds five to six to eight to $10,000 to our tax roll. Obviously, we are sensitive to, you know, rising tax rolls. I think that that definition by the Florida legislature is just patently ridiculous. If they follow that own rule, their revenues have gone up year over year for 25 or 30 years. So are they raising taxes? I think that it's careful that we don't conflate Leon County with the city of Tallahassee, who did recently raise, raise their millage rate. Uh, half of our budget goes to the sheriff's office. We have a jail that we're responsible for. We have been able to raise our deputy salaries to $60,000. We have added two ambulances to District 4 in Northeast Tallahassee just in my time, under my direction, because, and those are $1 million apiece when you, when you deploy a new ambulance. So, uh, I, I think that we have been very responsible with our budget at Leon County. And again, I would challenge you to find any other counties that have not raised their millage rate in 13 years through pandemics, recessions, and everything else.
Dr. Montilla, same question.
Listen, the community is hurting. So, for me, I would, I would vote on, hey, let's, for this next year, we have a surplus, right? We should budget. So if we have a surplus, then we should be okay with our budget. And as we talk about these services that, uh, that we are looking at to improving, you, you have a, a, a fire facility in the northeast that is not storm-hardened, or you have the issue where I had a patient this week tell me that they had to call 911 because somebody was, uh, one of their employees was experiencing a heart attack outside. Four of them called 911, and they could not reach anyone. They had to put this individual, their employee in the car and rush him, and they had to get emergency heart surgery. So I think it's looking at where these, again, these dollars being allocated and being proactive about it, because it's gonna save us not only time, energy, effort, but money in the future as well.
Thank you. And a quick 30-second follow-up. Is it right to give county employees, including high-earning managers across the board, non-merit-based 5% raises year after year when many of your constituents don't get such raises? 30 seconds.
Who's that for?
Uh, Dr. Montilla?
It's all context, right? It's when, time, and place. Also, as a business owner, I don't just give raises to my employees just because, right? It's, what does it look like? What work has been done? So to answer your question, it all has to be time and place. Right now, it's not the right time to give anybody, give the raise that can help benefits, um, our, our community.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Welch, same question.
Uh, I voted against across-the-board pay raises in this year's budget, strictly for the reason that I, I didn't feel like, after two years of doing 5% across-the-board pay raises, that given the increase in our revenues, that we needed to do that. Uh, that was a, one piece of discretionary option in the budget that, that I felt was inappropriate. Uh, I think obviously, coming out of the previous two budgets where we did that, you were coming out of the pandemic and inflationary, uh, issues were causing problems. So ultimately, uh, you know, our county administrator denied a 5% across the, or pay raises he was entitled to. So I, I think that, um, we do a great job. We, we value our employees at Leon County, and we want them to be paid well.
All right, we're got, really on the home stretch now.
Okay, we have some really important proposed amendments for the Florida Constitution that will be on November's ballot. Uh, let's see, we'll start with, uh, the amendment for Florida, the Constitution that will legalize recreational marijuana for adults age 21 or older. State-licensed entities would be authorized to distribute marijuana and related products. Why do you support or oppose Amendment 3 to allow adult personal use of marijuana? And in your opinion, how would its passage impact Leon County? Brian Welch, 45 seconds.
Uh, yes, I support the amendment. Um, I don't know how much impact it would have on Leon County. We already, uh, civil citeate most of our marijuana possessions. There's no one in the Leon County Jail right now, uh, that is in there on a marijuana charge. Um, but I think ultimately, the tax revenue that could be reaped from that, when you look around the country at the other states that have, have passed recreational marijuana, uh, it could be a significant boon to, to Florida's economy, which would then trickle down to our local economy, and ultimately, I'll support it.
Thank you. Isaac Montilla?
You know, I'm gonna leave that one open. I'm gonna leave that one open to, to the individual to do the research. Uh, you know, as it stands, it's, it's still general and it's, it's broad, but I think everybody to be able to, I want to encourage everybody to do the research to make the best decision for themselves. You know, as a holistic practitioner, there's, there's a side of me that goes one way, and like I mentioned, there's two sides. But I want to encourage, um, everybody to go ahead and, and do the research and make the empowered decision.
Isaac Montilla, we'll stay with you for this next question. Voters will be asked to approve or reject Florida Amendment 4, which stipulates that no law shall prohibit, penalize, delay, or restrict abortion before viability or when necessary to protect the patient's health as determined by the patient's healthcare provider. Why do you support or oppose this amendment? 30 seconds.
So I am more, so I am pro-life, so I am more passionate about this Amendment 4 than I am, uh, about Amendment 3. I think as well, though, that is, is too broad and it's reckless. So I'm opposed, I'm against Amendment 4.
Thank you. Brian Welch, same question.
Yeah, thank you, Danielle. I think it's important for folks to understand that nothing a local elected official does will impact abortion policy. That is a state-level and a federal-level issue. Um, that being said, uh, I will support Amendment 4. Uh, as the father of daughters, uh, I don't want the, the government telling them what they can do with their bodies. Uh, it's not something that we would ever do in our family, um, but that's our decision to make, and I think that's the point.
All right, you made it to closing arguments. This is your time to speak directly to voters. We're gonna start with you, Dr. Montilla. You have one minute to speak directly, uh, to voters.
So, uh, we're in a situation where, um, November 5th, we're, we have a chance to either select a, a someone to represent us or continue going the direction we're going. So for me, I just have visions for District 4 to allow us to come together and be proactive and listen to your needs, as I have been listening, and create opportunities for us to continue to grow effectively. And there is, like, there's already plans set in motion, but I want to come alongside and ensure that these things get done in a more appropriate manner and ensuring that we get the maximum, uh, that we can get in District 4. So appreciate the support, uh, and I'll, so you got the polls.
Thank you. Commissioner Welch, close us out.
Uh, well, thank you, William. Uh, you know, I've tried really hard over the last four years to, to finally get some traction for the folks in Northeast Tallahassee and local government, and frankly, I think the proof is in the pudding. If you look at the things we've accomplished, uh, we are going to be delivering $250 million in Blueprint projects to Northeast Tallahassee in the next four years. All of those projects will be completed. Uh, I am not a politician, I'm just a regular person. I seldom leave District 4. Uh, I work there every day, I play there every day, and that's where I raised my family and have been for 25, 27 years. Um, Northeast Tallahassee is my home. You're not gonna see me, uh, you know, in the news, you're not gonna see me, uh, acting crazy or seeking the spotlight. I just try to do a good job every day. And, and like I said, I think if you look at our record, you'll see that we have accomplished a lot in a very short amount of time where previously, we didn't get a lot done. And so I'm proud of my, uh, my term. It's a privilege of a lifetime to serve on the Leon County Commission, and, and I would just ask your blessing to be able to continue what we're doing and, uh, and finish some of these projects. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank, that's it?
There you go.
Thank you to the candidates and to our audiences for joining us, the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, WFSU, and the Tallahassee Democrat for this program. You can find a replay of this forum on our YouTube pages, tallahassee.com and wfsu.org. The recorded broadcast will be aired Wednesday, October 21st at 11:00 AM Eastern on WFSU 80.9 SM. So tell your friends.
And remember, early voting begins for the general election on October 21st and ends November 3rd. Election Day takes place on November 5th.
If you have any questions for any of our upcoming forums, please email us at news@tallahassee.com. And you can look for our special ultimate election guide to the, uh, Tallahassee and Leon County candidates, uh, with interviews with all the candidates on the ballots, uh, which will be available on the, on tallahassee.com on Monday. Have a great day! You did it!